Good evening. We will call to roll the November 4th, 2025 Hutchinson City Council Meeting. Please call and roll.
Richardson.
Here.
Garza.
Here.
Bass.
Here.
Magers.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Victor Half Moon here to lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this privilege to come before your throne of grace and to lift up this meeting tonight and those who are here. Lord, we ask that you would give special measure of wisdom and unity and guidance to each member of the council and that they would make decisions that are beneficial for this community and in line with your word. We thank you, Father, that we can come before you because of the atoning death of our Savior, Jesus Christ. And so for your glory, we ask these things, Lord, and ask your hand to be upon this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number four, there are no proclamations. Item number five, petitions, remonstrances, and oral communications from the audience.
This is the oral communications from the audience. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and items not on the agenda. Audience members may address items on the agenda when the item is discussed by city council. Is there anyone here to speak in public comment? If you could, please come to the podium and state your name and your address.
My name is John Vedder, address of 3,400 North Waldron. Actually got some papers that might help counsel here.
If you could hand them to the clerk, please.
There should be one for everybody there so we can all be on the same page. I'm here today as a voice of our neighborhood. We've got a couple that live at 3,309 North Lakeview Road. They're consistently harassing residents, blighting the neighborhood with code enforcement violations you'll see on the final page there, current and recent pictures of their wonderful yard. Code enforcement's been working with them since February. I don't know that they've come to a complete resolution yet, but I know that the code enforcement has tried and tried and these folks have been very interesting to deal with. They've even spoken on social media saying that they want to wait in the garage with a shotgun for their neighbors or that they want to burn their neighbor's fence down, including me. We've had some protection from abuse orders have been issued. I have taken all the measures I can. I've just constructed this last weekend another 125 feet of privacy fence. I planted 25 willow trees. And these folks have now put parking lot style commercial lights on their roof pointing at the neighborhood. So you're seeing pictures of my backyard there. That's taken at night without a flash. So that's what I look at when I look out my bedroom window or I look out my kitchen window. Unfortunately, the law enforcement are not able to address this because the city does not have any kind of light pollution or light trespass code like a lot of municipalities do. I don't think that this is limited to a neighbor-on-neighbor sort of situation. The city typically enforces codes addressing common or shared nuisances, usually like property blight, tall grass, trash accumulation, inoperable vehicles, where multiple residents are affected rather than just one. There's a petition there. I walked through just down Waldron last night and collected all of those names. I could easily double or triple that next week if you'd like me to get more names for you. It floods not just my yard, but all of our neighbors and we no longer get the night sky. It'd be great if we all played some pro baseball in our backyards, but unfortunately, there's no way to combat this or deal with this. So I'm coming here before you counsel today hoping that maybe if you put yourself in our shoes, if you make a decision that upsets one of your neighbors one day and they decide to do this to you, you will not have a recourse. You will not be able to call the police. You will not be able to call the building official because we don't have an ordinance for something like this yet. So anything that the council can do to help this out in my situation or in future situations for other people, my neighbors would be incredibly appreciative. These lights went up October 18th. I don't know if there's a way to make, introduce some sort of ordinance like a lot of other cities got, even making it possibly effective October the first, if that's possible, since this got put up October the 15th. I just don't know what all to do. So I'm coming here for your help.
I thought we did have an ordinance against bleep over lights into other people's property.
We don't. Not currently. It's common in a lot of municipalities and I talked with Mr. Lady somewhat about it and I think he's got pretty good knowledge of what could possibly work or what kind of language might be helpful, but that's not for me to...
Right. Is your contact information on this paperwork?
It should be on a few emails that I sent to, I think I sent one to you, Mr. Magers.
I can send it to you.
Yeah, I think I have it too. I'll see what we can, look into this and see if there's something we can do about it. So I know this is probably, it definitely looks like a nuisance of some sort, but let's have to talk to city staff and see if there's anything we can do about this, so.
I've talked to city staff a lot since February and it's, we address things as they come up and this one has kind of hit a brick wall whereas, hey, you're going to have to buy blackout shades, live with it. Your hens may not know when to lay in the backyard. You may not be able to enjoy your patio with your friends having dinner, but this is what you're going to live with is what I've kind of been told, so unless we can find some sort of solution. And I invite any of you over early morning, you want to come by around 6:00 AM, I'll pour you a cup of coffee. Come look at my backyard or in the evening, same time. Stacy can get you my contact information if you need it and...
I've got it all right here, so.
Okay. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I did drive by the other day, last week. It was like two days after you emailed me. I do believe that the issue that we're going to run into, like I told you via email, is that we can't apply codes retroactively. And that doesn't mean that there isn't a solution. It just means that a light ordinance code may not be the path forward here. So, and I think that there's a, because of the PFAs or PFS in place, that that means city staff are going to tread very lightly because it could always appear that we're picking sides with this issue and that sort of thing, so.
And that's why I've wanted to get together that petition for you guys so you know it's not just me.
It's not just you.
These neighbors, they said some things I can't repeat in this room. As I was collecting the signatures last night, they're pretty upset.
Yeah, I think this is helpful to understand the scope of the problem, that it's not just you. So I thank you for the work that you've put into this. And like I said, we can always talk about what this ordinance might look like in the near future. Unfortunately, we don't have any source or recourse for you at the moment.
And even if the ordinance didn't specifically affect my situation, I don't want anybody to be in these shoes in the future. Like I said, if you put yourself in these shoes, you got no one to ask for help for. So if it helps somebody, it's better than nothing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in public comment? Seeing none, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Any questions or discussion from council?
None here. Excited about Dane Powers being on the airport advisory committee or board.
Do we know if this gets them a full board?
If what?
If this one, if Dane being, or Mr. Power being appointed gives them a full airport advisory board.
I'm assuming somebody will come off at the end of the year and we'll be appointing somebody else.
I think there's two coming off, but they may...
Okay.
Okay, may re-up.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item number seven, public hearing. Public hearing to approve LMN 25-5, Appeal of Landmarks Commission's denial of a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of Bernard's Restaurant and Catering, generally located southeast of Blanchard Avenue and Bone Break Street, 2100 South Bone Break.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Matt Williams, Director of Community Development. I'm coming to you tonight to present an appeal of the Landmark Commission's denial of a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of Bernard's Restaurant and Catering by the city. As a reminder, Bernard's is located on both the Register of Historic Kansas Places and the National Register of Historic Places. Any project undertaken on a listed property requires review and approval before any building permits can be issued. Following council's decision in April declaring Bernard's to be unsafe and dangerous and directing it to be either repaired or removed, the city began a dual-track process with the property owner to ensure that the structure was demolished or repaired. Both the property owner and the city have applied for demo permits on the property and have sought the necessary approvals from the Landmarks Commission and city council. Tonight's appeal is in response to the Landmark Commission's October 9th denial of the demolition of historic property by the city. Under state statute, only the governing body is authorized to consider all relevant factors in determining whether there are any feasible and prudent alternatives to the proposed demolition. Consistent with city code, the governing body must evaluate this appeal request by determining whether such alternatives exist. Feasible and prudent alternatives are defined as those that can be reasonably accomplished and are sensible or realistic. When making this determination, the governing body is required to consider, among other factors, technical issues, design issues, the project's relationship to the comprehensive plan, economic issues, and planning issues or alternatives. While the structure could in theory be rehabilitated and may qualify for federal and state historic income tax credits, the length of time the city has requested rehabilitation combined with a significant financial burden, such work would impose on the property owner makes rehab unlikely. In addition, the building has been determined to be unsafe and dangerous by the city's building official. As stated at past city council meetings, the city was following this dual-track process to ensure this structure was demolished or repaired. The city only planned to demolish the structure should the property owner fail to complete demolition of the structure before their demolition permit expired 60 days after it was pulled. Following the approval of the property owner's demolition permit at the September 2nd city council meeting, their permit was never officially pulled and no progress in the last two months has been made towards demolition on the property. City staff also received notice that R&amp;D construction, the property owner's contractor on the project, is no longer involved with the project. Due to the lack of progress on demolition in the last two months, the city will be moving forward with the demolition should this case be approved. It's recommended that the city find, city council find that there are no feasible and prudent alternatives to the demolition of 2100 South Bone Break and overturn the Landmark Commission denial of the demolition permit. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or remarks from council?
We'll let Ms. Bernard speak?
We will. Let's see if anybody has any questions for Mr. Owen first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and Madam Mayor. Did you all look at the blueprints that I bought?
At the last city council meeting, yes.
So those were bought because we do want to demo part of the building, but we're trying to keep the kitchen, which is so historical that made us qualify October the 5th and the first weekend in January as a state and federal landmark. So who has had food out of that kitchen? Alabama, Diamond Rio, Britney Spears. I have an ultimate list of food prep out of that kitchen. So according to the diagrams that I bought you, we're going to take half of the front off and push it back, tear all that out, and tear down the north end. So yes, we're wanting to do some demolition. I'm not ignoring that, but we went through Mann and Company. If you looked at those drawings, which you didn't mention anything about, correct?
No drawings have ever been officially supplied to the city except at city council last time.
Did you get the drawings?
You handed me a copy to look at at that meeting.
And what were they, sir?
I'll let you speak to that.
But at this current time, you don't know what Mann and Associate drew up or anything?
Mayor, she needs to address the council.
Yeah. Mrs. Grass.
I just want him to answer that question. So I brought those to you last time to show our initiative of what we're trying to accomplish and do out there. Since we are historical, I have located volunteers that are historical or just townspeople that are willing to help me. That's all I'm asking for. Our family has been in Hutchinson over 120 years and we've gave to this community. So by me going to Mann and Company and spending $3,000 to get a diagram to keep just the kitchen, that's all I'm asking for, that we can still redo that, stay somewhat historical, and continue to cater. And I was also encouraged maybe to have a drive-up window. When you go to that area, where can you eat at? Madam Mayor?
I'm, I can't think of any...
Not really any place out there. So I have help, so they want it demoed. So I'm just asking for an extension for 30 days till my help can get really lined out and we can keep the kitchen and get the last particulars from Mann Associates. I did not spend $3,000 for nothing. I spent it to show you all. Here it is. This is what we need done and this is what we're trying to do. But the north end, we're going to demo it. We're going to take the front part of the restaurant that was always historical, downsize that, move it back to the kitchen. So it's not going to be a big space out there. Where we are demoing at on the north, I don't know if any of you know, but in years back, we had one of the biggest flea markets in the state of Kansas. When you came around that curve, not only did you see Bernard's Restaurant, but you seen Bernard's Flea Market. So I have help and I have meager funds and I'm requesting that we do not burden the city with $47,000 to demo the building. I don't want to do that and that's not right. So we take it on demoing ourselves and whoever we can get commercially to finish it, we want to do it, if that makes sense. Why do I want to put 47,000? Remember in the very beginning, it was said it was 400,000, then it went to 200,000. Now it's 47. And I feel like since I put forth the effort and my team to get the architect drawings and get them down here to show you this is what we have planned. So that's all I'm asking for is 30 more days to show you the rest of the progress of what we're trying to do out there. And since I produced paperwork, I feel like we're going to do it. But if you all want me to burden the city with $47,000, there's nothing I can do. But I don't want to do that.
Does council have any questions or remarks for Mrs. Grass?
So we have the drawings. I spent $3,000 for those for Mann and Company. All I want is my little kitchen back there because Hollywood has eaten our food, whether you all know it or not. Am I begging? Absolutely. There's no shame with begging as a woman. And I want to still have a woman-run restaurant in Hutchinson. How many minority businesses do we have in Hutchinson, anyone? City council? It's not about being minority. It's just being a woman and like I've always said, serving good food. So if the city wants to come out weekly for the next four weeks to check on our progress and report to city council or whatever, we can show them what we're doing. So it's not like we've not done nothing. Landmark has got letters from all over the United States. 75 people wrote letters in to Matt. I asked Matt had he received any letters. He said only one. I don't believe that. I talked to these people personally. California, Arizona, New Mexico, Kansas City, wanting us still to stay. People may not want us to stay here locally, but we want to stay. And think about what we attacked with highway comes through that cuts us off. So not only me, but all the neighbors up the road were cut short. Did they get some money for it? Yes, many, many years ago. But because of the architect plans and the national and federal nomination, it hasn't really been a year of being federal, barely. The federal came in January. The state came in October. And once again, I told you all, we were selected out of 2,000 applicants. That's saying something for Hutchinson and Reno County. We're on the map, just like 59 years at the Kansas State Fair. So I feel like that we've given to the community, so just give us 30 more days to work with our people. I'm not asking for six months. I know it's the end of the year and it's like, well, here she is again. But all I'm guilty of is trying. Questions?
I mean, you're asking for another extension to keep trying.
Well, since I have the actual blueprints now.
Those aren't blueprints.
So what are they?
They're sketches. They're not stamped, they're not official in any way, shape, or form.
Who fixed them, sir?
The architect?
Yeah, I didn't, I can't make anything like that. They came from Mann and Associates.
I understand and they're an overall sketch. They're not, they're not an actual plan showing here's the steps and here's what we can put out for bid to get this done.
Okay, so when you look at those right there, it shows where everything's going to be put at, correct?
Yes, it's very, it's a general scope. It's a very beginning, here's what we're trying to do from a 10,000-foot level.
And so there's more paperwork that's going to come from Mann and Associates, is what I'm trying to tell you.
That would be required, yes.
Yes.
My question is after, I mean, I'm almost off city council.
You what now?
I'm almost off city council.
Yes, sir.
So when I first got on city council.
Huh?
When I first got onto city council.
Yes, sir.
We came in front of city council and this has already been going on for a few years and it was, we will do X if you give us six months. And two or three years later, it's nothing, it's still been done. And now we're sitting here, I don't know, seven years in?
Okay.
And it's continuously, time has not been kind to the building. There's been some cleanup and whatnot, but nothing has been done to physically see improvements to the building, which is really what the crux of the matter is. And now it's been a state historical location for a year.
One year, correct.
And federal since January, so 10 months, almost 11 months. And federal since January, so 10 months, almost 11 months. But I'm not seeing anything but, but just, instead of actual activity happening at the building to make things happen, which would go a long way, if, if three months ago you started tearing down the north side of the building, and you pulled the permit, and you got the permit pulled, and you did the work, and you came in front of us and said, I'd really like to keep the kitchen. Wow, there's been actual physical progress at the location. The only progress I'm seeing is trying to find ways to extend it another 30 days. Give me another six months, give me another year.
I haven't asked for a year.
It's been seven years, at least.
I know, so what happened during those seven years?
Multiple buildings got tore down, multiple buildings got put up. People had a lot of life changes.
So, as a restaurant...
Family members pass away, people get sick.
So, restaurant, being in the restaurant business, we went through COVID. What happened during COVID?
But the, when was the last time that the restaurant was actively functioning?
Oh, '16.
Okay. So, COVID did not shut down your restaurant.
What do you, say that again?
COVID did not shut down your restaurant.
I'm thinking of when my sister died. Say that again now?
When was the last time the building was?
Open to the public?
Yes.
It would have been in 2014.
Okay. So, COVID did not shut down your business.
Wait a minute, so when was COVID?
2020.
Okay. Hold on. So, we had to close because of COVID.
Please speak into the microphone.
Okay, we had to close because of COVID. So, the last three or four years, I haven't really been around because my husband was in KU Heart Hospital dying. He's dead, he's gone, but I'm still trying. And since I bought what you call kit sketches, that I paid $3,000 for, I have a little more to pay to get the rest of the paperwork, is to show you, we are actively doing something. The building's been totally gutted and 99% cleaned out, which you'd have to go in there to see that. There's nothing, little of nothing. What you want to say, John? Excuse me, please.
I wanted to say that we have to thank you for all the time you've given us. It's, you went out of your way. There's no excuses for, for how long it's taken. The key issue is money. And effort from Suzie. We finally got in a such position to start having some money. It's been about the money, and we, you have allowed us to go this long, and it's, it's a blessing, and we have to thank you, period. And, and by all rights, you could, you could take it over and tear it down, and, and you would be within your lines of justification because you have given us time, but there's no money. We finally are able to, to generate some capital and have some money to move forward. And we are. And, and I say that, if we don't do it, have it taken care of in 30 days, come tear it down and do whatever you want. But I believe that, that we can generate the funds to take care of it within those 30 days. I think we can pull, did they pay for the blueprint or the building permit today?
I don't know, I've been working at...
If not, it'll be...
I work at a funeral home, I cook there.
It'll be taken care of tomorrow morning. And I believe we can have it taken care of within 30 days. I really do believe that. And, and if we don't, without question, you have all justification that you, that you should, and you could, just tear it down because you've given us a tremendous amount of time and tremendous opportunities. And without a doubt, there's no discussion, there's no argument about that. It's all time. However, we finally got a way to generate some money. Got business coming, getting some business now. The fair generated a little capital, but we finally have the money to go forward. And we have the money to be able to demolish it within these 30 days. And, you know, we've been dancing. We've had three city managers. And I'm, I'm not making any excuses, I'm just saying, it's been a rough road all the way around. A, a rough road. It really has. We're going to go this direction, go this direction. We want you to do this, we want you to do that. No, we want, now we need that. And dancing with no money is really tough. It's like dancing with no shoes, because we didn't have it. We didn't have the foundation, until now. And like I say, I guarantee you, we'll take care of the, the building, pay for the building permit tomorrow, and we'll get started tomorrow. And again, if, if it's not done in those 30 days, I'll help you come tear it down, to save the city some money.
I hope you understand my frustration when...
I know you're...
When four years ago, it was, I guarantee you, if you let us, if you just give us six months and don't tear it down, we're going to pull permits and do the structural repairs to it. And then that didn't happen. And then three months ago, I want permission to tear it down myself. And I'll go pull the permits, make it happen, and that didn't happen. It's been seven years of, if you give us this, we guarantee this is going to happen, and it doesn't happen.
There's no question. There's other structures in this city that, that have been there for 15 years, that are in just about as bad a shape, and you know it, you know it. But, but I can't argue with you. I can't, you're right, you're, I mean, I'd be a fool to try to...
I mean, we haven't had anyone come in front of City Council for seven years, ongoing with the same issue, on the same property.
And I do apologize to all of you, but it's been rough because of COVID and me spending many years with my husband at the hospital, couldn't leave, but...
Don't make excuses.
I'm not.
They're right, they're right. However, I don't think anybody's had the city on their tails like you've been on ours, either.
I would say we've been very lenient.
I'd say you have too. But I mean, what have you got to lose?
Multiple councils.
What have you got to lose, 30 days? What have you got to lose? Let's talk about the gains. What can you gain, if in fact we can produce?
Does anybody have any additional questions for Mrs. Grass?
So, Mayor, $47,000 is what I was told, what the bid is to demo it.
That's the bid, yes.
Say what, ma'am?
That's the bid, yes.
Okay.
And can you imagine how, how...
Sir, please let her speak.
I beg your pardon?
Please let her speak.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So, and my begging, yes, with diplomacy, because I have volunteers, like I said, that are going to come out and help me demo the north end and part of the south end. And according to the paperwork everybody was giving, I'm not asking but a little bit to keep, to keep it historical and to cook. That's all. But are we going to do some demo? Absolutely. And I told you, if they want to come weekly, daily, or to see, I have no problem with that. But I do not want to burden Reno County with $47,000. That's not right, that's not fair. Do I apologize for all the years and whatever? Absolutely, very humbly. And I see you all thinking, going, is this worth it? Should we do this? But I felt because of the drawings that you got, showed the initiative, what we're trying to do. Okay, so, if you demo the building, Madam Mayor, then what do we do next?
You still have the property. You can do whatever you want on that property.
But you have to pay that debt within three years.
To the city.
That debt will have to be paid.
Right, but you still maintain ownership of the property throughout the entire process.
It's a heck of a cost, it's a heck of a price. But it's far, it's far less than the original $400,000, which you know now is a joke.
So, really, so the amount of the bid is the next item? No. The amount of the bid is not up for debate right now. What we are discussing is whether or not we are going to go through with the appeal for the Landmarks Commission. So, that is the question that we are considering at the moment.
Okay, so, what exactly will the appeal be? Help me.
The, the appeal is basically, do we agree with the Landmarks Commission, or do we override the Landmarks Commission and allow the city to move forward with demolition of the building?
Well, I beg mercifully. The landmark has been some help, but the state has done more to help us.
Do you have any paperwork from the state or, or anything like that in regard to, hey, we're, here's the funds we're given to make this happen, here's the...
I have tons of emails, but the whole thing is...
Why don't we see these things, though? Then why aren't we seeing these things?
I can bring them here.
I mean, it's, it's, tonight's the night, if nothing else, to have it.
I didn't know, and I do apologize. But I can get a copy of those and show the communications. Matt knows I've communicated with Topeka, correct?
I, I'm asking if you've, you've, you've been approved for certain funding and credits and whatnot. Ms. Grass, based on your project, we approve this amount of dollars?
I do qualify for tax credits.
Qualifying is good. Have you been approved?
The other thing is, the government took a lot of those grants and loans. But that doesn't make me stop. And I have proof from the state to Katrina Ringler, you might, might want to write that name down. That's who we've dealt with, and the Historical Society. Since we're historical, we've asked for help, and we've reported to them, back and forth. And then only that, there's a lady named Megan that's on saving endangered species. She sent Matt a letter, correct, Matt? I'm just, he asked who all...
Okay, did you bring a copy of the letter? Did you bring a copy of any of, of these documents or emails?
No.
Okay.
If I'd have known earlier, I would have brought them with me.
Okay.
But we have the cash to purch, to purchase the building permit, cash, tomorrow morning. And we have the cash to move forward, to go, to move forward with the demo. I think that's more important than talking about, do we have any this or that? We have the cash to move forward.
We're going to move on to public comment. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item?
Yes, ma'am, my name is...
Please approach the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Elizabeth Martin. I live at 207 East Seventh Avenue. I have been Suzie Bernard's friend and her sister's caregiver for a lot of years. I help her. She, she's been trying very hard. She lost her husband. I know how that feels, because I lost mine. I don't know if anybody up here has lost a person. The grief that you feel. Yes, seven years has been a long time. But she's had a lot of grief going between then and now. She's lost a lot of business. I've helped her with, I've been out there, and I helped her clean. I've helped her cater. I, you know, I've tried to do everything I can for her. What I'm hearing from you guys here is just unreal. I don't understand.
Which part do you not understand, ma'am?
I don't understand, there's houses sitting in this town that is three times worse than what hers is. And hers is out away from town, not in town.
It's within the city limits of Hutchinson.
Well, it's in the city limits, but it's still out where there isn't anything out there.
There's houses and businesses.
Just let her speak, I have a timer running, Mrs...
Okay.
I'm giving you the same five minutes for all public comments, so...
All right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who has not spoken yet? Any additional remarks or questions for Mr. Williams from council?
Can I follow up on a couple items?
Yes, please.
First of all, I mean, as staff, I'd like to say, it's obvious, no one's going to deny that Suzie has a lot of passion for the property, and we totally respect that. I have reached out to the state. In fact, there was a money the state offered, some of the CLGs, the Certified Local Governments, earlier this year, that they hadn't used on something else. And I asked them, hey, is this possible that we could use this for their Bernard's property? Unfortunately, that was not able to be used for the property, but I have kept checking. I've spoken with Katrina, she's up to date with this meeting tonight. She knows exactly where we're at in the process. And then, in regards to volunteers being able to demo, demo the property, we would have to, the demo permit would have to be pulled by a licensed demo contractor. So, volunteers would not be able to demo the commercial property.
I was going to ask that, thank you.
I want to make sure that, has there been any discussion with Ms. Grass on what the total scope would look like? And that might be on the architect, to demo what needs to be demoed. And the, because it's not just a demo permit that has to be pulled, because walls are getting moved. I think it's a little bit more in-depth on rehabilitating the kitchen portion of the building. Because I, does it have to be brought up to current codes?
Yeah.
Because it's a major, it's a major alteration. It's just whatever the stage is, or whatever it is.
Correct. So, eh, once we, if they were to demo part of the building, the rest of the building would have to be brought up to code. As far as I'm aware, we haven't had any discussions with Mann and Company about the project. And like I said earlier, the, the plans that she presented you at the last meeting, those have not been officially submitted. I glanced at them, I don't believe our building official has seen them.
Any additional remarks or questions for Mr. Williams?
Mr. Lady, can you please go to the, I'd like to ask you a question, please. Thank you, sir. What's your feeling about this? You're the inspector, what do you feel?
I would ask you to not speak about your feelings, but just to give us the facts, just so we can...
Well, the facts are, you know, Matt Williams and I have discussed this thoroughly, and, and that's where we stand on it. I have seen the plans briefly, like Matt said, he glanced at them. He gave a copy to me from the last meeting. I glanced at them. I'm familiar with what Ms. Grass wants to do with the property, but it's going to take a lot more planning and, and a lot more work before we could approve anything like that.
What would be your timeline for that approval, if you, I mean, six months, a year?
If we got the proper plans in?
Yeah.
I mean, for us to be able to approve it and look at it, I mean, take days, if we got the proper plans in.
But, but even the plans we received or looked at last meeting, they weren't even a stamped?
No, they're just a set of sketches from Mann and Company, just showing what, what the potential project look, would look like.
So, no, I mean, we, we have no contractor, we have no prints. We don't have any permits of any sort, correct, on file? So, okay.
I have a question.
Please approach the podium.
So, both of them said they just glanced at it briefly. So, what I said didn't mean anything?
Those are not form, those are drawings. And I understand that they were expensive, but those are not architectural drawings. Those are a sketch that shows what you could possibly do. Architectural drawings show where wiring is and all of the things that go into the building of what you're trying to do. They're very, very different stages.
Yes, ma'am. So that's the beginning of the phase that I tried to show you. And I understand with taking part of the building down and leaving the kitchen. And that, the main reason we wanted the kitchen to stay. Mann and associate came in the building, walked off through it and looked at it. And that's what architects do, correct?
Correct. That is, that is some of the services they are.
That's some of the ser- so when he came out and looked, he was honest with me. Mann and associate was frank. They're not out just to take my money. They want business too. But they said, yes, they walked off all the footage, went all through the kitchen. And I told him because of the historical part of it, that's why we want it to stay. Instead of just laying it all down and walking off. It is history. And that's why out of 2,000 applicants, we were accepted. So do I want to put 41,000 in the kitchen? Or do I want to pay 41 or 45,000 on the demo? I'll take the kitchen. I'll take door number one. So like Matt and the other gentleman said, if they get the right paperwork, it can and will be considered. So like Mr. Irving said, we have the funds to do that now.
Okay, so to give you an idea of scope on what this is-
Scope of work, the electrical, the plumbing, heat-
Engineering.
Engineering.
Your, your current kitchen may not be up to code and might have to be almost completely replaced. So what you're saving, all your equipment in there may not be up to par.
Equipment or the actual building, sir?
All of it.
Probably all of it.
Well, the equip, the equipment's been removed and it's in storage.
Okay.
So I have all the pots and pans, dishes, deep fat for all that.
Hood vents?
Huh?
Hood vents?
Yes, sir, and I have drywall.
Fire suppression systems?
I don't have the compression system. One step, one day at a time. There is a big, and you might drive by and look, there's a big tan building over there that is full of restaurant equipment that we have bought or either saved. And I know from the Health Department, it has to be up to code.
I mean, you're, you're demoing and basically it's going to cost you probably more than building just a new kitchen standalone small building to do this.
But I'm willing to take the risk. Instead of putting the 45,000 on the demo, I'm asking, can we keep our kitchen? Demo the north? And from the paperwork you've seen, we're going to take the front end, move it back. So I'm going to downsize it. I don't want to be open to the public. All I want to do is cater. So you asked, why would I want to cater? Because you can count your nickels. You know exactly how much money you have coming into your business. If I was just open to the public, you got your deep fat fryers, you got your heaters, your electric, all that's going, and you're hoping to have business. I don't want that. I just want to go in and cook and go home.
Let me, let me talk to you about this real quick, okay?
Sure.
The prints that we're talking about, an engineer would stamp it. He would stand by those prints.
Yes, sir.
He, he will make all the calculations that he made, everything he made. He will stamp it and say, this is what, how I want you to build this. That's, if you would have brought us a print here and it had a stamp on it, an engineering stamp on it, and that's part of the process. The other part of the process is taking it to the Inspection Department, have them, it has to be approved by them.
Yes.
By the inj- by the, our inj- our inspector, and there's a lot to it other than a drawing. I, I, the drawing was-
But I wanted you to have some idea, hey, this is what Bernard's are trying to do.
I understand that.
Yes, sir.
I understand that. But just so you understand what we're talking about on the print, an engineer will stamp it. He says, this is how it's going to be done, this is how you got to do it. And then it's got to be approved by our city inspector. Then, then once you've done all that process, then it, then it's a real print that, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
It's a real print.
You, you do know, we went through this four years ago.
We're quite years so far from that at this point. Are there any additional remarks or questions between council members?
But I do want to tell Mr. Richardson, thank you, because I do understand the undertaking that you just said. It's quite a bit. I, I get that, I know that. And that's why I went to Mann and associate. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I don't have any more questions.
Thank you all.
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yeah.
Bass?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes. Next item.
Can I ask you something? What did you just all vote on?
We haven't voted, we just closed the public hearing.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve LM 25-000005, Appeal of Landmarks Commission's denial of a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of Bernard's Restaurant and Catering, generally located southeast of Blanchard Avenue and Bonebreak Street, 2100 South Bonebreak, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
You know, this is hard. I've been with you for a long time on this part, seven years I was there. But I also have to represent the other citizens in this town. It's hard on me to be a city council member is not easy. I don't know. I think you have enough time to get this thing fixed and it's, it's hard. I'd say yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Item number eight, ordinances and resolutions. So hold on, hold on, please.
Staff will explain, I, staff will explain. We have to move on to the next item, please.
Consider an ordinance authorizing issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series 2025, the Amber Hotel Project.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. I believe I have Sarah Steele on Zoom with us this evening. Back in February of 2023, City Council passed a resolution determining advisability of issuing IRBs of 18 million for Amber Hotel LLC. This is for the construction and furnishing and the convention center for the Hilton Inn that has now been built. So now we are asking for City Council to consider an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the industrial revenue bonds. As reminders of how the process works, if approved, the city will become the leaseholder of the property and Amber Hotel LLC will be the leasing. This is why citizens may see the city of Hutchinson's name on the parcel search for Reno County, because the city will become the, the leaseholder of the property. At the time, the bonds are paid in full, the city will deed back the property. During this time, the city is not responsible for any of the expenses related to the property. The city is also not responsible for any expenses related to issuing the debt. The city is not responsible for paying back the debt in any manner as well. See, also as part of this, Amber Hotel LLC is asking for a 10-year property tax abatement. Therefore, no payment in lieu has been included in your packet tonight. If, I'm not sure if we lost Sarah Steele. I will answer any questions that you may have. Okay, she's still here. She's representing Gilmore Bell, who prepared the documents for Hilton.
Does she have anything to add to her presentation or is she just here for questions?
She's just here for questions.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, just for questions?
There's nothing really unique about this IRB compared to what we do for any other industrial development IRB situation.
Not, not at all. Everything's pretty typical on, on what we normally do.
I think that your explanation was spot on and easy to understand and follow. So I, I don't have any additional questions.
There's nothing different to this than what we originally agreed to.
Right, no, I, I know. But not everybody watching from home knows what we agreed to eight months ago or whenever this was. So I appreciate her thorough explanation. Is there anybody in the audience here to speak to this item? Looking for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series 2025, Amber Hotel Project, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Thank you, Sarah.
Item nine, new business. A, consider acceptance of a bid from Ward Davis in the amount of $47,000 for asbestos removal and demolition of 2100 South Bonebreak Street.
Is there a presentation on this or are they outside in the hallway?
It would have only have been what, what you heard already.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions either.
I don't either.
I would move to accept a bid from Ward Davis in the amount of $47,000 for asbestos removal and demolition of 2100 South Bonebreak Street and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Item 9B, consider acceptance of a bid from Ward Davis in the amount of $67,500 for asbestos removal and demolition of 22 West Fifth Avenue.
Good evening, City Council. Jason Lady, building official. So... Are we on item A?
22 West Fifth.
Apologies.
On 9B.
9B?
Yeah.
All right.
22 West Fifth.
So our recommendation for 22 West Fifth is the staff recommends City Council accept the demo bid by Ward Davis in the amount of $67,500 and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. So on August 5th, 2025, City Council passed Resolution 2025 R22, finding that the structures located at 22 West Fifth be unsafe and dangerous, directing the structures to be repaired or removed. Council allowed the property owner 30 days to repair or demolish the condemned structures, such, subject to required cash bond in the amount sufficient to cover the cost to remove all the structures by the city. On October 7th, 2025, City Council heard an update on the status of the structures. To date, no visible progress of repair or demolition of the structures located at 22 West Fifth has been made. Due to the lack of progress or the repair or demolition of the structures and the failure of the property owner to provide any required cash bonds, city staff notified City Council that staff will move forward with the demolition of the structures. On October 17th, 2025, the city of Hutchinson released a bid, a request for bid on asbestos removal and demolition of the structures located at 22 West Fifth. In addition to asbestos removal and demolition, the project includes hauling away of all contents, signage, demolition material, removing all concrete footings, foundations within the structural limits, cutting and scraping all utilities, scraping and parking lot, light pole removal, backfilling the area to grade and fill with dirt is also included. Any asbestos abatement is to commence within 45 days with demolition work to be completed within 120 days of the completion of the asbestos abatement. So you have the analysis in front of you of the bids as they were tabulated. The $67,500 was, was the low bid for this project from Ward Davis. And we do believe that he is a qualified demolition contractor to complete this project. Financial consideration, cost for demolition would come out of the city's demo reserves fund, so we're not asking for any additional money here tonight for this project. Strategic alignment for this project, the demolition of the deteriorated building is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, advancing the key goals related to community appearance, public safety and reinvestment. In particular, it supports the plan's livability. Since of place work frame, it aligns with goal G, point 2, point 3, point A. It's the key city entrances and corridors are attractive and inviting. Remove all the structure contributes to a safer and more visually appealing environment while encouraging reinvestment in priority areas. Recommendation action is the staff recommend the City Council accept the bid by Ward Davis in the amount of $67,500 and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
I have a question. The timeline for demolition, so 45 days to begin the asbestos abatement with 120 days after starting for the asbestos. What is the timeline for the demolition?
Timeline, demolition permit is good for 60 days.
Okay.
After the, after it's been issued.
After the asbestos abatement?
Yes.
Okay. My second question was in regards to your financial considerations section, saying this comes out of the city's demo reserves fund. Will the $67,000, $67,500 still go on the property as a tax lien? Or is this instead of going on as a tax lien?
No, it would still go on as a tax.
It will still, okay.
Yes.
And so that reserve fund is in case the owner does not pay the tax lien?
Well, the reserve fund would pay for the cost of the demolition. And then we would assess it to the taxes.
And then we assess it, okay.
Yes.
And then if the property owner repays it, it goes back into the demo reserve fund? Is that correct?
I would-
Essentially, yeah.
Okay. That's my only questions. Any additional questions from council?
No, no.
Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
I move to accept a bid from Ward Davis in the amount of $67,500 for asbestos removal and demolition of 22 West Fifth Avenue and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Item 9C, status report on 411 South Main Street and 806 North Plum Street.
So staff's recommendation on both these, 411 South Main and 806 North Plum Street is that staff recommends the City Council wait 30 days for staff to provide an update on the status of the building's ownership and for the potential use or restoration plans of the structures. Did, if I may, I'll spare you the background as the, all the letters read the same on the background and the timeline of the August 5th date and the October 7th date, the October 17th date where we released the bid. There was, so on 411 South Main Street, there was a bid of $528,700, And the reason for the cost for that bid being so high, it's not just the type of structure that it is. There's a adjacent wall in 413 that would have to be looked at, engineered, and probably built back. So it, it appears to be a shared wall. We'd have to get an engineer in there to evaluate that and see what would have to be done and built back. So it's a pretty costly endeavor to go forward with this project. There's also, I've talked to the owner also, there's also a couple potentials for this property changing hands. So if, if that's the case, the property gets sold to another owner, then we would look to the other owner to take care of the property.
Is the property currently for sale?
I wouldn't say the property is currently for sale, but the, the property owner is interested in, in it, in selling it and-
Has he signed anything with an agent?
Has spoke with, no, not that I'm aware of. I shouldn't say no, not that I'm aware of at this point.
Thank you. This is the exact situation I was worried about with this property, with the shared wall and the cost for analyzing it to make sure it wouldn't fall down and ruin the other properties.
Well, maybe it'll get sold before we get to that point.
Yeah, I am hopeful that this spurred some action to sell it from the owner to somebody looking to reinvest. Are any additional questions or remarks from council?
808 North Plum, didn't it, was it, didn't it sell in the tax auction?
Yeah, 806 North Plum.
806?
Yep.
Sorry.
It, it did sell at the Reno County Sheriff's Tax Sale. A new owner has plans to demolish the structure themselves. They will have their own demolition contractor come in and pull the appropriate, I have spoken with the owner. So they will come in, pull the appropriate permits, demo the building themselves, and then they have plans to revitalize the area, so.
Good.
I think this update is really exciting. I'm, I mean, this is part of what we talk about, what we hope comes from these hearings is somebody is spurred into action to sell or renovate and fix the property. is somebody is spurred into action to sell or renovate and fix the property. Eight oh six North Plum is definitely in need of revitalization, and knowing the little bit of background, I'm excited about that project.
I have a question about another property. Do you want me to wait for City Council comments?
Ask him now, why is it there?
The Fourth Avenue Church near Burger King.
There's my question.
She has a question about the church on Fourth Avenue next Burger King.
I have the same question.
I was gonna give an update on that tonight. But the, I did speak with the demolition contractor this past week, or I guess it's been a week and a half, but they did pull their, they did pull back on their demolition permit just because the bid for the asbestos came in higher on the project, the asbestos removal came in higher on the project than what was anticipated, so they are not moving forward with the demolition of that property.
And we didn't get estimates on that property for the demo?
No, we did not.
Okay.
No, we did not.
So, that may end up on a future City Council agenda.
Yeah.
We'll get it updated on December 1st.
Okay.
I have an update ready for it, and I will be speaking with the demolition contractor as well and see if he would be willing to at least release what their bid was on the asbestos, just so we as a city have an idea of, you know, what that potential cost may be.
My concern about that property is there's been somebody, at least the last week when I drove by, there's been somebody camping out there in the front. I was hoping that it would be remedied by the building being demoed, but I haven't seen him out there. So, out there today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they took several steps toward the demolition of that structure. I mean, they removed the electrical, they also removed the gas meter out there, and they were making progress, but when the bid came in too high for the asbestos, they had to...
Well, I'm right there with you, Mayor. I thought this, this would take care of itself.
Yeah.
It's not, so.
Any additional questions for Mr. Lady? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number ten, report of city officials.
I'll let Greg go first today.
I don't have anything.
Great, Scott.
Okay.
I've had some business owners downtown thanking us for the efforts we've made with the homeless in the last couple weeks, so appreciate everything we're doing down there, and they really, really do appreciate that, so. And then the trucker treats that went on and the Halloween stuff is all safe. I, all the community that came, businesses, city staff, I know we're at several of them. I just, that was really great community for basically a whole week, and we had a bunch of stuff going on for that, so really appreciate everybody that was involved to make the, these events safe for our children in this community, so that's all I have.
Mr. Garza.
Well, you know, guys, I've been here a long time. It's not easy being in this position as a City Council, but I choose to be here. I want to represent the people. I do the best I can, and we all do the best we can. It's not an easy job. I expect my hair to fall out probably next year. It's already white, so I just, all I gotta say, we just do the best we can. That's all I got.
I'd like to make a comment commending county staff and city staff, both with the United Way initiatives, but also on some side discussions I've been a part of on trying to find better ways to work together between city and county, and everyone's been, in the room I've been in, everyone has been very open to finding new ways of working together, and there hasn't been a lot of headbutting, and so I wanted to make sure and comment about that. And the United Way thing, the contest that's been going on, kind of reminded me about that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I saw right before we came into council that the city announced that we will not be shutting off water for late payments, not indefinitely, but at least for a period of time while things are kind of up in the air with certain programs being funded. The, so I actually, right before we started meeting, I made a donation to the Reno County Food Bank, and I encourage anybody who's able to also make a donation. The LEAP program, which is vital to so many, was announced, I believe, yesterday or today that it is on hold until they receive additional information. Mr. Vegas, I would encourage you to have in the next week, in the next two weeks, the utility program, assistance program that we've talked about for a couple of times this year, maybe solidified and brought up to council so that we can begin that, maybe for the first of the year, or whenever staff feels we'd be ready to roll that out. I would say go vote, but it's, everybody's hopefully on their way and done it. I don't have any additional remarks. Mr. Vegas, do you?
Only thing I have, I was asked by a council member why 4:00 PM and not in the morning, or not canceled since the chamber meeting. There's a conflict there, and I couldn't remember at the time, I was slightly distracted, but the reason for the 4:00 PM is actually because of the water rights, the bonds for that, they need to be approved at that, at that date. They would not be ready at nine, they're still, the sale is happening in the morning, and so there wouldn't be enough time to get all the paperwork together for you all to approve until around 4:00 PM. That's the reason, so at least now we're all on the same page. I just forgot when I was asked. That's all I have.
Thank you, next item.
Item ten, future agenda items in offerable vehicle discussion. Item number eleven, adjournment.
Before we adjourn, we do have two executive sessions. Can we start?
Two executive sessions.
Can we start with the one for Mr. Vegas?
Confidential data, and I'll give you the motion, you can just say so moved.
Thank you.
I think she meant mine. Mine first.
Now, you told me you wanted the southern one first.
Well, I did the long one first, but we...
Could you both argue into the microphone, please?
Which one do you want, Mayor?
The short one, please.
Okay. They're gonna have to talk about this. I'm sorry, I have to behave now. Here's the motion. I move the City Council recess into executive session pursuant to the non-collected personnel matters exception, KSA 75 4319B1, in order to discuss a performance matter involving the city manager, the opening meeting to reserve the City Council chambers at 6:50 PM.
So moved. Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.